Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, January 9th, 2018. Happy New Year to all. Let the record show that all the city councilors are here. And we all know that Councilor Hicks has resigned.
No.
Yes, two weeks.
Surprise.
Everybody's awake. No, your wife did not call. Excuse me for my misspeak. Folks, you have minutes of our special meeting, the work session. Councilor Hicks, I think you had a minor, you wanted to point out.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that I was unfortunately absent.
You got that, Karen?
I have that correction, thank you.
Great. Everybody else okay? All of theirs, if I would say a aye.
Well, you don't have a question yet. You just said, is everybody else okay?
Oh, yeah. John, you're late.
I approve the minutes as corrected.
I have a second. I have a second. There we go. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Visitor comment from Museum Open House, Vicki McCubbin. Good evening, welcome to City Council.
Hi, thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here once again to talk about the museum. And over the winter break, on the 30th of December, we held another open house. And we had close to 50 people in attendance, and from as far away as Portland. And I was excited to find out that people had Googled the other events. And we have been working really hard to up our game for advertising. There were people who hadn't yet seen the new military exhibit. They came to see that, and we had a few goodies. And one really exciting thing, we had a gentleman and his grandchildren who grew up, he grew up in Independence, graduated from Independence High School in 1939. Sadly, while he was serving in the military, because his family is Japanese-American, he lost his property here. It was resold. But what a fascinating story, and so nice of him to share. And hopefully, he's going to come back and maybe he's going to give you one. He said if he could work it into his work schedule, he still works as an accountant. So, 95 years old. So, anyway, we had a wonderful time. And you're going to be receiving a save the date card, because we have another event planned on the 24th of February. We have been working with the Independence Downtown Association to organize a birthday celebration for the incorporation of Independence from Hill and Thorpe Town, working on scavenger hunt and prizes, and really working so that the museum can not only educate the community, but work with downtown businesses. So, just wanted to update you, and thank you for your time. And in a few minutes, hopefully, you're going to approve Aiden Christensen, who is assistant officer, and she's better than the Society of Law and not the city, so I'll stop talking now. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And before she goes away, I wanted to tell you a story of how great it is to live in a small town. I stopped for something to eat at Independence Grill, and I left my cellphone there. And she is going to go to the restaurant and bring it to me while the meeting is still going on.
Yay. Aaron Young, do you have something to give your round?
I'm here, yeah. I just wanted to come give a quick update on the progress. Projects like this sometimes seem like a duck sitting on a waterboard. There's not a lot going on on the surface, but underneath, there's a lot happening. We met with four different designing teams, and had narrowed it down to two. And we're working a lot with kind of site layout, and parking, and the nature of that lot being on slope, and some difficulties we have to work through there. There were some small issues to work out before we were ready to sign a development agreement with the city. I'm happy to say that that's been resolved with the help of staff, and we got that signed yesterday. So, that is signed. Well, they seem like just a little piece of paper to some, you know how that is in the past. That's a big deal to us, because it's a green light you're looking forward. And we have done a lot of work with, meeting with different folks. We're looking at this project with a different set of eyes than we look at other projects outside the city, because it isn't our city, and it is our hometown. And so, we're being very, very critical as to design elements, and what it really means to the city for the long term. So, you're going to see some activity going on. We're going to come up with some signage, and things like that, when we get some really good language. We're still trying to come up with a great name for the project. So, we want to reach out to the community, and maybe some of the schools to do that. So, if you have any ideas with that, and want to come up with a great name. You might see a little activity on the lot as far as elevations, and just people stirring around a little bit, but we're excited to do that and show that there is some activity going on. And we're going to be proactive in doing that, so people see activity going on, and they don't just see something sitting. So, I think that's it. I mean, we're working real hard. A lot of stuff's been happening, and we're already getting on with it. So, thank you so much for your approval, and we'll take this enthusiasm and move into other projects that we identify in town that we are excited to do as well. And we'll make that announcement when we're ready to download them. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Great. Anybody else have any other visitor comments making this point? Okay, we're going to keep moving forward. The reports and presentations, I get the first part. Just a couple of pieces of information to let you know. The Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring the State of the City address. For myself and the mayor of Monmouth, we'll be over at WOU on Wednesday night, the 7th of February. Also, for your calendar, Senator Ron Wyden is holding his Polk County Town Hall on this Saturday at Western Oregon University. And I can't remember if it's 1:30 or 2:30. Let me look, and I'll get back to that. I've had the pleasure this last week, as a matter of fact, yesterday, I was invited to speak to the American Leadership Forum, representing rural communities in the valley, along with a number of other people, talking about the urban-rural divide, and where we are having commonalities, and where we have differences, and what might be done to... It's, the Senator Wyden's event is at 2:30 on Saturday at Western Oregon University. And this is the town hall he does in Polk County. Also had, I serve, the governor's appointed me, as you know, to the Regional Solutions Team, dealing with economic development in the region. And so, we had meetings and proposals and lots of things going on last week. And also, I'm the current chair of the Midland Valley Partnership Board, and we meet annually, or semi-annually, to help move economic development forward in the three-county area. The reason I mention that is just to let you know that while I may not have a, one of our internal commissions that I sit on here, I get to go other places, and get to travel and do a little bit, you know, so that's just information. In your packet, you have committee and commission reappointments, and that's on, in your packet, you see a number of names. And does that look okay to everybody? Is someone making the motion?
I would move to approve the appointment.
And reappointments?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion second. Okay, so we're reapproving everybody and appointing two. Yeah. Are we okay down here, you guys? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, as I put my foot in my mouth at the beginning of the council, we do have a, Councilor Day did resign, and so we now have a council vacancy. And the charter says council can fill that spot. In your, in front of you, we have, I asked Karen to pull up, a application for vacant council position. We've used this in previous years when there's, you know, we're not like right after the election. I'd like to suggest that this might be something we would like to use, for people who would like to apply. There's a whole typos in here from, you know, dates and times of meeting, but we'll get that cleaned up. But on the inside, it has people asking, we ask them, you know, their experience in elected, being an elected board, volunteering, community involvement, vision, and things like that. Is this, do you folks think that this would, first, I'm assuming that you would like to go with an application instead of just naming someone, but that's a, that's a council decision here, so preferences?
I appreciate that, from having a little background.
Looks like that.
I would, so what's our, do we have a date to reply by?
No, no, that's something we have to decide tonight. But is everybody okay with this? Is that okay? All right, everybody's okay with that? And we'll make, Karen and I will work together on making any, you know, a couple of small items. When do we want, how long do we want to have, allow people to respond? Do we want two weeks? Do we want a month?
Do we, I guess, first question is, do we have the criteria?
No. Other than the qualifications? Right.
Yeah, five-minute timeline.
No, we have no time. We have no time. And this would be a, for a three-year appointment?
I, well, three and a portion is.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
I'd like to see this, at least the first round, back to us in 30 days.
I think 30 days is enough.
That sound okay? Yeah, I think two is short. Yeah, I, I wanted to put it out there, but yeah. So, like the first meeting in, so, we would get back, okay, so we, we want to review that on the first meet, this is February.
January.
Yeah, so we can do the first.
And I have a question on that, too. What's the delivery process for this notice?
We'll, through the, through the city, through people talking to folks, we can put it on our webs, you know, all our standard social media things. I'm sure the paper will pick it up.
Can we put it in our February water bills?
Is that, is that, is there still time to do that?
Sure.
Good. No problem.
Then, if, as long as the water bills have gone out, people have had a chance to reply, then the first meeting in February should be okay.
Sound all right with that? Better meetings on the 13th. Yeah, I think that should give enough time.
That should be plenty of time.
We'll usually have the first December.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good. And then we'll take a look, and then, here's what we're going to end up doing. We will take a look and see who it is, and we'll just kind of, we have to chew on this and figure out who we're going to appoint.
If it's okay with council, can we give like a deadline of like, say noon on the day of the council meeting or something, just so that we have a chance to put everything together?
I think that's great.
Makes sense to me. Everybody sound good? Thank you, you have time.
I'm to put everything together.
Do you want a day or two before the meeting?
Since I don't have many recommendations, I'll have you doing this.
Okay. And then, so then we would, now let's just talk a certain second, because then we would get them in, and then you folks are not going to have, I'm just thinking, you would not have had a chance to read them yet. So, so we'll just get them, and then we'll start reading them, and then we'll, you know, probably later in February, we'll, we'll move on that. Does that sound? So, we wouldn't necessarily make the decision on the 13th? Yeah, unless, because I'm going to guess that if we don't have the turn in until noonish, you know, or, you know.
Then probably a decision at the second meeting.
Yeah, we could, we could work to that, or if we have to have, yeah.
And that's not an inordinate amount of time to go without.
No, I don't think so. I just want to make sure everybody's good with that. People happy? Any questions? Okay, we're going to just move forward. Now, with Councilor Day leaving, one of the requirements for the MINET is that we put, have a council member to serve on the MINET Board of Directors. And I think, I've talked to Councilor Hicks, he's willing, willing to serve, I think he do a good job. Do other, do other councilors think that that's okay?
Yeah, that's where I was looking, so.
Actually, I was thinking, Councilor Tate is, because he has more history of MINET.
I would be interested, but I don't think I can make the meetings. That's the problem. Yeah, that's, that works stuff. But with the library, I'll, I'll sign it. So, is, I don't have, if I do a consent of, consent of the council, is that okay?
I believe you might need a motion.
All right, will somebody do this, so that, I will, we appoint Councilor Hicks to the MINET Board?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No. And it's not because of you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's two times I voted against you. So, basically.
Mr. City Manager, I think you have some things for us. Go ahead, Chris. The world famous phone. We live in the land of real, Eric.
Mayor, Mayor, Council, thank you. So, 2018 is going to promise to be one of our busiest years in commercial development, possibly ever. It's going to be probably the beginning of a transformational period for the city. Not only, I, I think, you know, Eric was sort of downplaying, but a lot of, you know, that development, that commercial development down there is going to be a hugely significant piece of eye down town, and that was very, we went through a lot of negotiations, so that wasn't, there was no real delays. That was getting to, you know, where, the point where it was yes for everybody, and we got there, and really, really happy with the outcome. So, that work will begin, you know, put the deadlines in the development agreement, and we're really tight about seeing that happen. In the macro, we have Ullman Pavilion working on the Bee's Brewery, that's been working hard this past year. And as you recall, I has had some grants worked through the Downtown Association, so we're excited to see that, what's going on. Independence Station, John, from Independence Station LLC is behind me. That work should get started here very shortly. There is activity, and you know, the, behind those paper buildings downtown, there's a lot of work going on in those buildings, and they should be opening, some of the businesses opening up very soon this year, well, before the summer. So, it's a pretty exciting year, and a very busy one, and very, again, I think it's going to be kind of a transformational beginning. This is not all going to get done this year. Oh, yeah, not to mention the hotel, we received a site design review application, formal application, which should be looking at, it can start probably the end of February, beginning of March, in terms of the beginning of construction, so we will be looking at a groundbreaking on that project. So, huge year, a huge beginning to a new period, if you will, so.
You said you have the site review already?
Yes, site design review.
Yay.
Application. So, that was a nice big dig, and pretty, you know, lots of pretty goals. So, we're plugging through. We actually had a draft of that several weeks ago, that we went through and did a preliminary review, because of the change to the zoning code weren't in effect yet, so we actually gave the seat, most of us before, had a few comments, those been addressed, so we think this will go very smoothly, and get out the door very quickly. So, that, that's ongoing. Number of other things on my list for tonight. So, we, as far as downtown projects that we're working, and our own public work, those bid packages should be going out. I think we've just delayed that a little, a week or so, February 15th?
25th.
25th. So, January 25th, the bid package is going out on that. So, the first meeting in February, we should add back to you the, the results, and hopefully, the recommended contractor for that work, and that's Mont Seven, behind the Main Street Properties, some waterline work, including, including a water line on D Street in Independence Station. And there's just, there's some pieces here and there, so it's a smaller package, but it was part of the overall plan for that work. And that will bring, that will bring to an end the public work that we're doing on this project, you know, for this phase. We also have, of course, coming up, the package.
David, excuse me, is that Independence Station or Independence Landing?
Well, in this case, it's just downtown improvements. It's just downtown, so it's a downtown package of work. Most of that work will be on, I mean, it's now Osprey Landing, by the way. That's, that's actually before the recorded name of the subdivision, so if you hear me call it Osprey Landing, that's, that's what we're doing. Came out, Independence Landing, please, probably a more reference to the project itself. Osprey Landing is the whole Alpenaker site. So, we'll try to distinguish that a little bit, and again, that's a subdivision, not recorded. So, yeah, so that work is ongoing. When you, I think it's worth repeating what was said from the museum as well. On Market Commerce for January 16th through 23rd, the display on Vanport will be out here in the lobby at 10:00. It's anything like the last display we had, and everybody expected it to be very, well, it's an informative thing, so I'm excited. We've got a mic, and we're excited to see that, and hope the public gets in and sees that story. It's a fascinating story of a city that didn't last very long.
And could council, please try to come to that city council meeting, it's a little bit early, so we can get pictures with you in front of the Vanport display.
And I'll also add, I had a chance to visit at the Regional Solutions meeting with Senator Jackie Winters, our state senator. She was in Vanport that day, that was home. And when they say run for your life, that was what really happened, because for those who may not know, the day the levees along the Columbia River in 1948 broke, in 30 minutes, a 30,000-person city was gone. It floated down in the river. And people literally, I mean, ran for their life. And Jackie had a coat, and the rest, and that was what she, that was it. So, anyway, it's an important part of working history, excuse me for going on.
No, no, thank you for adding to the message. So, I'm going to, a little bit of this, I'm going to read from it, this is from our economic department. So, recruitment is going to go for the Rural Innovation Catalyst Position Partnership with SegCor to carry forward the smart innovation work. Lots of interest and very good pool candidates, hope to have somebody by the end of the month. So, that was a transported effort. We're putting in another grant application, and that's together, I believe, with Polk County for the Business Organizing Rural Opportunity.
No, this one's just us and a bunch of other partners, but.
Okay, us and a bunch of other partners. So, we're going to get in the mix on this grant, because I had a hard time following along with Sean at the beginning of the day. So, and we're moving along on that one. Out in the hallway, you probably saw the smart meter display. You may have received a German hole, smart meter notices for Pacific Power, Pacific Power Light. We are the first city that they have, are going to be starting in, so we have these large media blitz, it's going to be going on in the fabric, and Sean's already lined up to speak with KATV, Katie.
KTW, Mark, Katie, ATU.
I should let you just do this yourself. Anyway, so we have Oldwood, they, it seems that PPL has a fairly significant media connection, media network going, because they, we met with them a couple of days ago, and we were talking about this, and here we are, and television stations are coming to India to talk about, you know, great things that we're doing here. So, great opportunity for us to showcase our story, and show it together with PPL, talking about the smart meter program, which will be really pretty interesting for the community, is that they get to understand what that's about. So, a lot of literature, we've got a lot of, on that. We are part of an state aviation, Department of Aviation grant to the feds for the I-8 Grant, GIES, you know, basically our drones IDP program, and that's a new acronym that the feds created. I didn't remember what it means, Sean, but I'll tell you, but you don't need to know, because you'll forget as well as I will. Anyway, we're in the mix, it's a new program with the feds, the state put us up, said, you know, we'd be a good natural part of reform, so we're in there on this one, and okay, you know, we're included as a potential testing location in science for business development of drone-related technology. So, good stuff as far as the air part, and the air and air consumption. Central planning progress process for the Riverview Park is gearing up. Open House is scheduled a week from today, the 16th, 4:30 to 7:00 PM, the library, so that would be a good one. This is for the main park improvements, the centerpiece of it all. So, that'll be a fun project for all of us, and it'll be for inputs and opportunities to construct. There'll be an open house, but that's the, that's the starting point. And then lots of tourism work going on, developing an un-cored Polk County park for celebration with Polk County Tourism Alliance. So, we're going to be un-corking stuff, I'm not quite sure what that one's about. I have some un-corking things. So, moving along, not such good news, but we're moving forward. We have, we did receive a resignation, and we will begin recruitment for the community, the position of Community Engagement Officer. So, that position is turning over, or has turned over, and we will be recruiting pretty quickly on that one. The League of Cities has a new director. We've had, I've had the opportunity now to meet with that person twice, we had lunch today, and we'll be seeing him again in about a month. The, my association, the Kansas Association, Moore, which I'm a member of, is doing their quarterly meeting here in the event center in February. We will be showcasing the, we're doing a little bit of a documentary showing on the hotel project and the fence landing. The four managers there are talking about, you know, basically what is, you know, what's going on in urban renewal and a rural community. They're really interested, in fact, they, Sean and the director have a chance to meet, and we are going to work with them to help them put together a training program for economic development certification, financially, for different cities. So, we will help, we're helping them get, get that kick started, together with the association, and Sean sits, he's a board member on as well. So, it's, it's good stuff, it's good for the ladies, good for cities, and certainly good for us to continue to have presence in these kinds of activities. So, you'll recall last meeting, we had a gentleman come up, and with concerns about the raids. We said we would meet with that person, we did. We had myself, the budget director, and the MINET director, and the public works director have his, had to call for an hour, going through questions and concerns he might have, and attempted to address those. So, I think he left feeling that he certainly got attention, he got a lot of answers, you know, people still, you know, examine their opinions, but I think he was pretty sure of having the, the one-on-one or three-on-one of people in this case. So, worked both. We should be coming forward to you soon. I think we've reached, finally, an agreement in principle with Wave, Astound, another cable, actually fiber provider, that will be looking to have a franchise agreement in the city. They don't really provide much of the Wave direct service, we're really sort of a conduit between here and there, so they really won't pose much of a Wave competition to the local, you know, the incumbent providers, including MINET. But they do need a franchise agreement, otherwise they have to operate under our telecommunications ordinance. And people like to work under that, they prefer the franchise agreements to, generally gives a little more security. Council of Governors have completed its hiring of the homeless coordinator. We are part of that agreement, part of that team that oversees that position, and get some benefit from that. So, that person may be underground networking, I'm not quite sure much, advanced levels they have to give to their, you know, departure, those they have to give to their last employer, but we were all very excited by the quality of it. One of the pool in particular is applicant, so it's pretty much an insurance person, and she was excited to take the job. We, Sean and I will be taking a little trip here shortly. We're getting some interest from mineries in the area. We're going to go over to Waunau and look at their particular setup, and they've, I think they've seen it, they have a pretty unique incubation arrangement for mineries and startups, and there's probably a lot to be learned there, and somebody who has a particular interest in Independence has their business located over there, at least their, their nascent business located over there, so we're going to visit with that person and some other mineries, and just talk about Independence and our, you know, our relationship with the industry.
I'm really sorry, I'm really sorry you have that horrible duty.
Yeah, we've decided that there will be no testing of standard product the entire time, and you can trust that. Unless it's deemed necessary in the pursuit of understanding the work. So, a few more things that I've got from others, so leave season pickup, public works pickup, and then on January 8th, if you have leaves left now, put in your bins. It'll wait for us, it'll be a long wait. The skater, is there a question coming? I don't have a question, but okay. Updated skating control systems, so that's, that's the controllers for our utilities, our water sewer systems, that, this is a tank full, or, you know, those will cut it off, that kind of thing, lots of graphics officials and things. Anyway, for the water and sewers nearing its test front, the old system, new system are going in parallel for the next two weeks. We have a new system that we're, we're onboarding, replacing the old one with. We are continuing our work with the city of Monmouth on our joint wealth fund project for pilot testing filters. Results will be submitted to the Drinking Water Authority in April, and both departments will be working together to complete the pilot filter study, so we move forward on that. They had an agreement meetings by the year ago, and so that's going on, on this phase. We'll be talking about next phase, which will be a little bit bigger phase of development to get us to the point where we actually have water to sell. So, but at this point, we're just pilot testing water out of, from the well structure, that that's a great project, including two cities, add to all of our capacity, and basically add a lot of supply, you know, that you need to just get that safety redundancy. Closing on our list station bids, on February 14th, a list station in the park behind the Catagou, we're doing a lot of work down there, both in for our. the Catico, we're doing a lot of work down there, both for our existing system and to support the landing project, the Oscar landing project. So that work will be, that's part of the five point nine million dollars that you approved earlier. And so that's going to be one of the early out projects that we're working on right away. It's the largest, our thirteen waste water lift stations in the city, just for your, your heads up. It's the one that was largely responsible for flooding our basement back in two thousand twelve. I've looked back and I look funny. Let's see. The, I already got that one. Oh, we are, for those of you who remember us talking year after year about reader boards, we have actually, we have got that project running, we are working with a science company. We have installation location outside the library. And so that will, that work will be contracted out here shortly, presuming that we're still looking at it. So that, that one is moving forward. We've been wanting to get a reader board for the city for some time. So it'll be, it'll be two facing, you know, so the traffic will come in, going, you can see it, and it'll be supported by both the library and city hall. So a lot, a lot of messaging possibilities there. Let people know about our meetings, let people know about the signing phase or whatever.
Is there a completion date estimate on that?
I think the planned completion would be within the next ninety days.
So you're supposed to err on the far side.
Plan completion.
Okay, so ninety-one minutes.
That would be the, that would be the ambition. This is great. Anything else? No, I think we're good. It's okay. It's okay. Thank you.
I think, Miss Gloria, you want to use the budget, or you're gonna use the budget calendar?
Yeah. For now.
You're gonna name Gloria the budget officer and then allow that process to go through. So you have before you the staff report and what we're looking for is two things, approving the budget calendar and approving the designation of Gloria Finance Director as the budget officer again this year. And she did a great job last year. So I don't want to jump back.
Are we, do we have a full budget committee at this time?
I believe, well, I doubt a counselor, so that will, I believe that we have a full slate of budget officers.
We'll come back on that. We definitely need to know that.
We'll have to get back to you on that one.
Well, since this is fairly pro forma, I move to adopt the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget calendar as presented and to appoint Gloria Wuch Finance Director as the budget officer.
Motion, two seconds. Are we okay? Discussion, once ever say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So, okay. We have, now we're going to renew business. I have, we have a public hearing on the closeout of Merritt and I have to open the public hearing and hearing gets to read a statement.
Yes. The city of Independence received a two thousand sixteen community development block grant from the Oregon Business Development Department Infrastructure Finance Authority for a regional Marion and Hulk micro enterprise project. Citizen participation is required by section one oh four A two of the Housing and Community Development Act and by federal regulation at twenty-four CFR part five seventy point four eighty-six, which requires each applicant, in this case, the city of Independence, to provide evidence and certify completion of a seven element citizen participation plan. The applicant must provide for a minimum of two public hearings, each at different stages of the project, for obtaining citizen views and responding to proposals and questions. The hearings must cover community development and housing needs, development of proposed activities and review of program performance. Prior to closeout of a project, the city must hold a second hearing in order to review the results of the project with citizens and to take comments about the recipient's performance as part of the grand closeout process. The purpose of this public hearing is for the city council to obtain citizen views and to respond to questions and comments about the project. Notice of this hearing has been published and or posted in accordance with local practice and the requirements of the CDPG citizen participation guidelines.
Thank you, appreciate that. Representatives for Merritt, I invite you to come and enlighten us. Good evening and welcome to city council.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name's Eileen, I'm a program coordinator at Merritt. So you all have a review of our report, so I'm not gonna read it to you, but I'm just gonna touch on some highlights. Do you all have it? See if I can. Oh, sorry. You won't be getting it.
I didn't think I'd miss it.
It's a bit too big, right?
Don't worry, it's gonna be my first post today. Thank you so much.
So with the period, we offered ten business starter classes in three locations, Independence, Woodburne and Salem. And those are all focusing on rural entrepreneurs. You guys have a friend of you make up of the clients. And twenty-two of them were from rural Marion County and only four from Polk. We did offer a class here in Independence, but just, there wasn't as much interest. But rural Marion County classes are growing, there's a high demand for them. Seems like they, they tend to have more, they fill up faster than our, than our city classes inside of Salem. On the backside, there's just kind of a sampling of the different kinds of businesses that have come. All of them have actually started up, which is part of what we do, helping people decide if that's actually the great, the best direction for them. So we still consider that a success if someone has come and kind of looked at some basic feasibility and decided that that is not the best option for them because it has saved them a lot of finances and grief in many different ways. So of those, there are seven who are currently in business and are generating revenue, nine that are working on it. So that can be many different stages that they are in. And ten are still thinking about it formally though, because they are still in our network and they are still asking questions and they're still working with us. This is the second year that we've opened up this grant to the rural community and it's just grown, gaining momentum, so.
In, of the, of the seven and the nine businesses, the seven who are in business and generating and the nine who have started and are working, are there any in Polk County of those seven and nine?
Yes. One of our rock stars is Viva Bodice and she has a in-home childcare center. And she came to us looking for help to expand her in-home childcare. At the time, she was just doing childcare and she wanted to expand, really do more of education focused and preschool. So through our classes and our IDA, are you all familiar with an IDA, Individual Development Account? Yes? Okay. So with that resource, she was able to fully recondition her garage and make it into an actual preschool classroom. She is also working with preschool promise and CCRNR, getting, really formalized with a Spark. I'm not sure if you're all familiar with that, I don't know too much about it, but it's kind of a more formalized certification process for in-home childcare providers to, to offer actual preschool. So more academic-based childcare rather than just babysitting. So she has been working through certification with that and she has now, she is, I think, at the fifth level, which is the highest level of certification through Spark, and has her garage fully reconditioned into an actual classroom and is doing very well. So.
Thank you for that. Additional questions from the speaker? It's nice that we're able to be part of, you know, growing business.
Yes, thank you so much for your support.
Is there no questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. There's an opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to comment on the closeout of the Merritt, the Merritt brand? I don't see anybody rushing to the microphone. Okay, Ms. Carrigan, we, with the five-year requirements?
Yes, you have.
Okay, without objection, the closing hearing, is that okay with everybody? Looking? Very much.
We did not finish business.
I didn't have a question. Okay, go ahead, I'm gonna go backwards for a moment.
The city manager mentioned talking with the people who were at our last meeting who expressed concerns about where the money and the water bills were spent and where it went to. And I have some concerns based on two documents that were recently made public. The first is the Independent that is published by Tramart, I believe that's the way it's pronounced. And in it, it quotes that about fourteen dollars and fifty cents goes to pay the debt for Minnet, a broadband company co-founded with the city of Monmouth. And about six fifty of the average bill, this is a utility bill we're talking about, goes to pay the debt on the Independent Civic Center. And this information was garnered from Steve Donovan, who is the city's contracted utility expert. And in the January water bill, there was an insert about what does your utility bill go for? And underwater, it shows six dollars and thirty-seven cents to Minnet, which is less than half of what was quoted by the city contracted utility expert. And it shows nothing for Independent Civic Center, although six dollars and fifty cents was quoted by our contracted utility expert as going towards the Civic Center in the utility bills. I would very much like to have an accurate statement of how much in each utility bill goes towards paying for Minnet debt and how much goes towards paying for the Independent Civic Center. And even if that is diverted through the Urban Renewal Fund, it is still money going towards paying those two bills, which we did see both of those bills outlined in last year's budget. I am at a loss to understand why there's such a disparity on the two amounts that are quoted.
We will get a written response back to on all of that. Do you have a copy of what you just wrote?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Will that written response be by the next meeting?
I think so, yes.
Thank you, and I'd really like it to be clearly indicated how much is owed on each of those two debt services and why there is a disparity in the amounts that were shown. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anything else under unfinished? Okay, we're gonna keep, before we go into a executive session for the purpose of real property transaction, we have, we saw a little bit of this a while back. And does somebody want to do an introduction of what this is, we're going to be looking at?
I can take care of that. So yeah, we, in the spring of last year, we decided, we're doing the branding campaign, we also wanted to really, with the eclipse coming, we knew we needed summer, summer events, so we wanted to film a lot of it and create a video to try to really kind of portray in the community that we believe, you know, we see it as this real vibrant, active place. So we ended up with this, this video, which is really kind of typically focused on the summer events, but we think it also really gives a good feel for the community itself. Nowhere just yet. We've got a couple of last little big tweaks we want to make before we're making it public.
And travel, Salem has just released three new videos also, and one of them has some play especially concerning hop and vines in this area.
Great. Okay, yes, sir.
One thing I forgot in my report. February twelfth, Lincoln's birthday, we are doing our Lincoln reenactment at Maxine's Ballroom. So it's a free event sponsored by, sponsored by the city. We're gonna do the high school last minute, they're, they have their own performance needs for the stage, so we, that was the best available second choice. First come, first served.
Anybody who has?
Birthday cake, we'll be there also for the press.
Thank you. For those of you, this person who did this Lincoln reenactment presented at the Lincoln Oregon Cities, it was really good. It's the one I happened to see, he does a couple of different gigs, but it was a press conference from Lincoln's perspective related and so forth. It's very believable. Now, I've never met, I'm older, I've never met Lincoln. Although my son would say Dan. But it is, it'd be well worth, well worth the time. We're gonna go into the executive session portion. The city council will not meet in the executive session for the purpose of negotiating real property transactions pursuant to ORS one nine two six six oh two E. The news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of news media specifically directed not to ordinate deliberations during the executive session except the stated general subject of the session previously announced. Though decisions will be made in the executive session, this time the council adjourned the conference room for the third serve. Duration of the executive session, once the executive session has your very maneuverable session in the council chamber, any decision from the executive session will be deliberated at that time. Everybody else? Yes, sir.
I don't expect this as afterwards, I don't know if you want to complete council comments or not.
Thank you, thank you. Are, there are council comments, since I don't anticipate, we will, what we'll do is when we'll come back, we don't have anything else, we'll just adjourn. That's what we do. Does anybody have announcements?
Yeah, single one.
Right. Okay.
The bullets are out, yes.
There you go. What, was that the end?
The bullets are out. Be sure, yes.
That's good, all right. Council, let's take about five minutes to get to the conference room and then when we come back, we'll just, we probably will just adjourn. Okay, break the executive session, thank you.